Good evening to you all. If you all could please take your seats, to the extent there are seats available. I know we've got a full crowd tonight, and we will do our best to keep moving. But if you all could at least be quiet, we'd certainly appreciate that. Thank you all for coming out to the Monday, April 23, 2018, meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted you all are here with us this evening. If you would be so kind as to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Thank you again. Madam Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Connolly?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Zee?
Here.
Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. And do we have a motion regarding the meeting agenda? Anyone?
I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
Do we have a sec?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. We do have a busy meeting, so we are going to get started right now, actually. Our first order of business, we have a few proclamations and special presentations that I think are quite exciting. We're going to start off with one honoring Ira Kaelin, who many of you know passed away very recently and has a history of a long amount of service to our community. I'm going to go ahead and read that. I understand some of Mr. Kaelin's family is here this evening. We would be delighted to have you come forward and receive this proclamation, if you could. But let me go ahead and get started, if I can find my glasses. Here they are. This is a memorial resolution honoring Ira Kaelin. Whereas the City of Falls Church lost a longtime citizen activist with the passing of Ira Kaelin. Mr. Kaelin served on the City Council from July 2010 to December 2013. Mr. Kaelin served in the Economic Development Authority, the City School Board Liaison Group, and the City Council's Economic Development Budget Finance Committee. Mr. Kaelin was an advocate for the City of Falls Church within the Washington Metropolitan Region, serving on the Washington Metropolitan Council of Governments, Development Policy Committee, Region Ford, and Transportation Planning Board. Whereas Mr. Kaelin had distinguished service at the United States Treasury Department and the Inter-American Development Bank. Mr. Kaelin generously shared his professional expertise in the field of finance in the service of making Falls Church a better city. Mr. Kaelin always considered the impact of City Council's financial decisions on future generations of city residents. Mr. Kaelin's wry sense of humor was enjoyed by many at City Hall. Mr. Kaelin's voice will be missed in the public discourse. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, honors Ira Kaelin's many years of public service in the City of Falls Church and offers sincere condolences to the family. Congratulations, and if you could, let's come forward. I would say it's appropriate for us to be doing this this evening as a budget evening. This would have been Ira's favorite night of the year, so... Anyway, why don't you come forward? Thank you so much. Thank you for having us. All right. If anyone would like to say anything about Mr. Kaelin, you're certainly welcome to at this time. Yeah, just right here. Thank you so much. Thank you for having us. All right. Our next proclamation is declaring April 23 through 26 Community Development Block Grant Week, and Ms. Hardy is going to do the honors.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program, has operated since 1975 to provide local governments with the resources required to meet the needs of persons with low and moderate incomes, and CDBG funds are used by thousands to meet nationwide neighborhood and human services needs. And whereas the CDBG program has helped more than 195 city families and individuals this year receive early childhood education, emergency rental assistance, transitional housing, tenant counseling, and needed property enhancements. And whereas the City of Falls Church, Virginia, and other local governments have clearly demonstrated the capacity to administer and customize the CDBG program to identify, prioritize, and resolve pressing local problems such as shortage of affordable housing, neighborhood and human services needs, and physical redevelopment. And whereas the City of Falls Church has several partners in the CDBG program, including Falls Church City Public Schools, Falls Church Community Services Council, Homestretch Incorporated, Casa de Northern Virginia, and the Falls Church Housing Corporation.
Now therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of April 23 through the 27, 2018, as Community Development Week in the City of Falls Church, Virginia, and urge all citizens to join us in recognizing the Community Development Block Grant Program and the important role it plays in our community. Okay. Thank you. Do you have anything you'd like to say now? I know we've got a few proclamations that are coming your way. Would you like to speak as to this issue right now?
I would. In fact, I would like to introduce Brenda Heffernan, who serves on the Housing Commission, to present some remarks about the proclamation.
All right. Thank you. Welcome to you both.
Good evening. I first want to thank Letty Hardy for being a council liaison to the Housing Commission and for her commitment to affordable housing in the City of Falls Church. The City receives federal funding for the Community Development Block Grant and home programs through a cooperation agreement with Arlington County. These funds allow the City to serve vulnerable populations through grants awarded to nonprofit organizations such as Homestretch, which provides transitional housing and support to formerly homeless clients; Community Service Council, which provides emergency rent and utility assistance; the Falls Church Housing Corporation, which provides repairs to aging infrastructure; and the Ethiopian Community Development Corporation, which provides loans to small businesses in the city. In addition, the federal CDBG funds also sponsor an English program at Mount Daniel Elementary School, which provides language training and homework tutoring for parents and students. We are here to celebrate the benefits provided by the federal CDBG and home funds and how they help the City meet housing support needs, especially in this time where Falls Church is facing a severe deficit in local funds for affordable housing and other programs for our most vulnerable residents. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have the proclamation. Would you like us to give that to you now? And I think we have another couple that you all are going to be receiving as well. But why don't we go ahead and just hand it to you anyway? I know you're... Anything more you wanted to add right now?
This is fine.
All right. Before... Our next proclamation will be by Vice Mayor Connolly, which relates to Fair Housing Month.
This is a proclamation declaring April 2018 as Fair Housing Month. Whereas fair housing has been the law of the land for 50 years, since April 11, 1968, when the Civil Rights Act was signed into law. And whereas the City's fair housing ordinance ended discriminatory practices in the sale, lease, and financing of housing, and ensured that all residents had access to fair housing that was free from inequity based on race, religion, color, marital status, national origin, sex, elderliness, familial status, or handicap. And whereas, as a community and as a government, the City of Falls Church is proud of the shared vision of inclusiveness, which is demonstrated by the citizens of Falls Church, whose racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds add to the very fabric of the community.
Now therefore, be it resolved that I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, on behalf of the Housing Commission, and in recognition of the 50th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act, do hereby proclaim the month of April 20... April 2018 as Fair Housing Month in the City of Falls Church, and call upon all citizens to support the City's total commitment to fair housing for all its citizens. All right. You got something else to say? Go ahead, please.
As we celebrate the 50th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act, we look to the City Council's leadership in delivering on its commitment to make Falls Church a truly inclusive community that enables and encourages people from all backgrounds to live here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I guess we'll do...
All right.
All right. 10, 2018, and I believe Mr. Snyder's going to do the honors.
Whereas the well-being of children has a profound, immediate, and lasting impact on the community, yet one in five children have a diagnosable mental health condition and nearly half of teens will have such a condition at some point. And whereas only half of children and youth are estimated to receive treatment, whereas the City of Falls Church partners with Fairfax County agencies, whereas by offering awareness and training opportunities, whereas Community Services Board same-day assessment and intensive care coordination and family engagement in the Department of Family Services have resulted in more accessible services and a 66% reduction in the number of youth requiring long-term residential treatment over the past nine years. And whereas new efforts such as the National Alliance on Mental Illness Northern Virginia's Parents Support Partners and System of Care Short-Term Behavior Health Services help families access quality mental health services. And whereas the Aurora House Girls Group Home staff have been certified in trauma-informed care and are able to serve teen girls with mental health needs. And whereas the U.S. Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration has declared May 10 to be the National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day.
Now therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim May 10, 2018, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day in the City of Falls Church, and urge all citizens to recognize that mental health in childhood means reaching developmental and emotional milestones, learning healthy social skills, effectively coping with problems, and that the community must support all youth to maintain their optimal level of emotional, psychological, and social well-being. All right. Thanks again. We've got some new folks up here, and we'd love to hear what you have to say.
We do. And I'm joined here by Deborah Roth, who is a member of the Human Services Advisory Council, and Alissa Macht, who's also a member of the Human Services Advisory Council. And I understand the school psychologist is here as well, if you'd like to come and stand with us. That would be great.
Hi. I just wanted to say something, and a lot of this was written by Nancy, and Alyssa and I support it and have a few other things to say to the mayor, the members of the City Council, and our liaison, Mary Beth Connolly. National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day raises awareness about the importance of emphasizing positive mental health as part of each child's overall development. Awareness Day is an opportunity for us to celebrate the positive impact that we can have on the lives of children, youth, and young adults when we are able to integrate positive mental health into every environment. Access to behavioral health services for children, youth, and their families is vital to making this truly meaningful. Half of all adult mental illness begins before the age of 14, and 3/4 begins before the age of 24. More than 40% of youth ages 13 to 17 have experienced a behavioral health problem by the time he or she has reached the 7th grade. In addition, suicide is the third-leading cause of death among youth ages 15 to 24. Compared with their peers, children and youth with mental health issues are more likely to experience homelessness, be arrested, drop out of school, and be underemployed. Compared to all other chronic health conditions, mental health disorders produce the greatest disability impact within this age group. And youth transitioning into adulthood have some of the highest rates of alcohol and substance abuse. This year's theme is Partnering for Health and Hope Following Trauma. We are fortunate that all of the counselors at the Aurora House Girls Group Home, which is doing tremendous work in our community, are certified in trauma-informed care. Appropriate prevention, early intervention, and treatment services are necessary to deal with behavioral health issues, including emerging mental health and substance use issues. When we focus on building resilience and social-emotional skills in children, youth, and young adults, we can help these individuals and their families thrive. The goal is for all children and youth in Falls Church City to be socially, emotionally, mentally, and behaviorally healthy and resilient. And now, as we deal with our budget and elements that affect our well-being, including a psychologist for the schools, affordable housing, and more, we want it all. Some who are restricting spending are just looking for funds, and we can all get there. As important as policy and systems are, we must plan for more. Yet, as important as it is to provide care, we can also do a lot just as individuals. If you see a kid who looks like he or she is in pain, do something. Call somebody. Talk to the child. Ask if they need something. Just smile. Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak from your group? You don't have to. If you don't like... If you'd like, come up forward, and we'll give you the resolution. Would you like to come forward? All of you. Thanks again. Long time no see.
Thank you.
No, really. Good thing there's no politicians.
Nice job. Nice job.
All right. There we go. There we go.
Maybe you should...
All right. Thank you. All right. And our last proclamation for the evening is a proclamation declaring May 6 through the 12th as Public Service Recognition Week. And for that, I will turn to Ross Lichtenhouse. Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Whereas Americans are served by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, and these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation moving. And whereas every day of the year and at all hours of the day and night, city and school employees provide critically important public services to citizens of the City of Falls Church and the region. And whereas the City Council and mayor ask the public to join them in recognizing and celebrating the city's and school's dedicated employees for their work in providing essential services to the public, including promoting public safety with the highest standards of professional law enforcement, providing a world-class public education for our children, hosting and promoting wonderful special events, enriching our lives with great books and library services, maintaining our streets and sidewalks, providing vital stormwater and sanitary sewer services, developing recreation and athletic programs for all ages, caring for the elderly and persons in need, promoting fairness and inclusion in housing and economic opportunity, promoting well-planned, high-quality development, caring for our trees, streams, and natural environment, and providing the Falls Church Way of personal and responsive customer service. And whereas we ask more of our city employees with each year, and city and school employees always go the extra mile to meet the needs of Falls Church citizens.
Now therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of May 6 through the 12, 2018, as Public Service Recognition Week, and thank all city and school employees for their contributions during the past year, which helped make the City of Falls Church such a great place to live, work, learn, and Mr. Shields, do we have anyone who's going to receive this, or is that going to be you?
Well, Mayor and Council, thank you very much for this proclamation. It is great to celebrate public service. Falls Church is a public service city with so many federal employees, so many state public servants, and of course, city and school public servants as well. So I think what we'd like to do is invite all of the school employees, all the city general government employees, and anyone who has volunteered in public service or has worked at any level of public service to come forward and accept this proclamation.
In other words, everyone in the audience.
Yeah, that's right. That might be the easiest way.
The flag's in the background. It doesn't...
That's what we're going to do. The council's actually going to come here and have the whole crowd in the background.
Oh. Everybody stand up. Should we stand up?
We're going to come to you all. Okay? Yeah.
I'm in charge now.
Come here.
Come here.
There won't be lots of time.
So the camera's there. We'll look at the camera. Yeah, we switched it up.
People are in the boat with you.
That's right.
Is everyone standing up? Need to stand up.
Okay, everyone. We're going to take a bunch of these.
Where's the proclamation?
High fives. Thumbs up. Snow bunny ears, though. That's local. All right. Just... Just smile. Looks great.
Always wear a dress clear. Always wear...
Very scared the hell out of me.
Sure.
All right. I think that concludes the business of the evening. Thank you all for coming out. Ms. Hardy's got something she would like to say.
Yeah. While we're transitioning, one thing I just wanted to note about the fair housing proclamation is that I think one omission that I think many people probably noticed is that one protected class that is missing from fair housing is sexual orientation and LGBT status. I think I can speak for us as a council that we would like... Certainly like to expand fair housing protections, but Virginia doesn't allow us to do so. And so I think this frankly is just an equality and a business issue. Businesses don't want to be located here if Virginia as a whole doesn't respect LGBT status and recognize it as protected class for fair housing. So a good takeaway for advocacy for the next General Assembly session. I think we've talked about this for the past several years, and so we'll keep trying. But a good takeaway for the audience out there. Thanks.
Well, we may even be hearing from some folks about that issue tonight, so we'll see what comes in just a minute or two. All right. Let's move on to the next order of business, which is oaths of office to new boards and commission members. Madam Clerk, is there anyone receiving an oath of office this evening?
I don't believe there's anybody here tonight unless they want to come forward now. Nope.
All right. So let's keep on moving. Let's move on to receipt of public comments requests. Would you like to start with a summary of written comments?
Yes, sir. Yes. Gina Kuchachi of 204 North Van Buren Street thanked Council for supporting Creative Cauldron. Eric Pelton, Marilyn Bug, Paul Bug, Beth Hahn, and Elizabeth Hume wrote regarding IB values as related to the budget discussion. Tina Erman, 226 Nolan Street, asked for more discussion of proposed tax relief measures. Lori Fred of 231 Gundry Drive wrote in support of Creative Cauldron. And then we had a number of letters and emails supporting fully funding the school transfer request. They were from Justin Kirby of 455 Maple Avenue, Stephen Mostow of 204 Grove Avenue, Joel Block, Eric Duchage, Stephanie Oppenheimer of 610 North Oak Street, the School Board Chair, Mr. Webb, Allison Brown and Gardner Humphries, Jennifer York, the SPEAC Chair, Anna Cooper, Laura Downs, the Elementary PTA Chair, Kristi Ann Peter Belazi, Meredith Bork, who's an SPEAC member, Carolyn Bruce, the MEHMS PTA Chair, Justin Kirby also wrote on behalf of the school's support employees EAC. Naomi Lobosko supported fully funding. Sharon Schiller and Ed Salzberg also wrote in support, as did Will Stewart, who is a teacher at GMHS. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So we're now going to move on to the receipt of public comments. I've got a fair amount of speakers. If you have not filled out a speaker slip and you wish to talk this evening, you're welcome to do so, but I would just ask that you fill out one of these red speaker slips and hand them to the clerk up front. When you do get up to the microphone, if you could, A, state your name and address for the record, and B, keep your comments to three minutes. It would be most appreciated. My apologies in advance for any mispronunciation of your names. Going to do the best I can. But our first speaker is Elise Morris and maybe her two friends. So, welcome.
Hi. We are fifth graders from Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. We are here on part of our exhibition project. Exhibition is a project where we choose a topic that we're passionate about, expand our knowledge, then we take action on it. We chose LGBTQ rights. A few weeks ago, we stood in front of the community center during the farmer's market and asked people to sign our pledge to be an ally. So far, we have 139 signatures. LGBTQ youth are more likely to go through depression. Being LGBTQ also means being a target for bullying in some circumstances. Everyone deserves to be treated equally, and we hope that you recognize that. Just to make things clear, allies are persons who consider themselves friends of the LGBTQ community. Allies don't discriminate against LGBTQ persons, and they are always supportive. We appreciate the Council for listening to us. Thank you for your time. Thanks.
Thank you for your time and for taking up such a worthy cause. Why don't you all come forward, and we can all shake your hands and congratulate you for the fine work you all are doing, and give you a pen too, if you'd like, okay? All right. Good work. Nice job. Nice job. How about this? One for you. One for you. Handshake there. Hey, what do you think of that? You two. How about you turn around and we'll get a little picture. What do you think? Mom and Dad probably would like that. Yeah, maybe. All right. You guys scoot in here. How about that?
Wants a guest of honor who's not taller than me.
Yeah.
It's also Cecily's birthday.
Happy birthday.
Eight.
Hey, cool. Thanks, y'all.
All right. Great job, guys. Thank you for coming out.
All right. Our next speaker is Jenny York, followed by Stephen Mostow. Welcome. Thank you for coming out.
All right. So my name's Jenny York. I live at 222 West Cameron Road in Falls Church. So I am the current chair of the Special Education Advisory Committee, parent of a student with a disability, and a former teacher of nine years in Falls Church City Public Schools. I'm asking you to fully fund the school district's budget request. By doing so, you are not only investing in our schools, but also in our children. I'm going to presume, based on the responses I've received, that you all had a chance to read my letter before tonight's meeting. As I stated in the letter, special education is my area of expertise and where my passion lies. I'm doing my best to keep the needs of the school system and students with a disability at the top of the priority list. If for no other reason, then I might give you all something to consider that you hadn't before. I did talk about COLA because I do realize that is the biggest hit on the ask of the budget. However, in addition to the psychologist position, I discussed the need for the special education specialist. In my opinion and experience with the school system, adding that position could also have a significant positive impact on student outcomes. This is my main driver, and I am fearful it will be one of the first things cut if the budget is not passed. At this point, we are not talking about a significant amount when you consider the overall size of the city budget. However, if we did not show up, write letters urging you to accept the proposed school budget, you would not know how important these requests are to the community and understand that we see it as a priority. Our job is to make sure you have the chance to hear our requests. This is not an us-versus-them argument, and it shouldn't be divisive. There are several other positions at stake if you choose not to fully fund the budget that could have a lasting impact on our students. Given my focus is special education, I chose to speak directly to those needs. However, please don't mistake that focus for a lack of consideration in the other areas. I am a strident supporter of the budget that was developed by Dr. Noonan and fully support the request in its entirety. In closing, I do want you to know that I am thankful for all that you are willing, able, and dedicated to making this little city great. The passion that you demonstrate as you serve our community is matched by our teachers, support staff, administrators, and central office personnel to serve our students.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Stephen Mostow, followed by Heidi Lang. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Stephen Mostow. I live at 204 Grove. I appreciate your time, and I promise to keep this well under three minutes. I think life is usually generally quite complicated, and there are few issues without any shades of gray. However, this is in... a significant positive impact on student outcomes. This is my main driver, and I'm fearful it will be one of the first things cut if the budget is not passed. At this point, we are not talking about a significant amount when you consider the overall size of the city budget. However, if we did not show up, write letters urging you to accept the proposed school budget, you would not know how important these requests are to the community and understand that we see it as a priority. Our job is to make sure you have the chance to hear our requests. This is not an us versus them argument, and it shouldn't be divisive. There are several other positions at stake if you choose not to fully fund the budget that could have a lasting impact on our students. Given my focus is special education, I chose to speak directly to those needs. However, please don't mistake that focus for a lack of consideration in the other areas. I am a strident supporter of the budget that was developed by Dr. Noonan and fully support the request in its entirety. In closing, I do want you to know that I am thankful for all that you are willing, able, and dedicated to making this little city great. The passion that you demonstrate as you serve our community is matched by our teachers, support staff, administrators, and central office personnel to serve our students.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Stephen Mostow, followed by Heidi Lang. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Stephen Mostow. I live at 204 Grove. I appreciate your time, and I promise to keep this well under three minutes. I think life is usually generally quite complicated, and there are few issues without any shades of gray. However, this isn't complicated. This is easy. We know the following five things to be true. First, the currently proposed tax increase is significantly less than originally thought due to the lower-than-projected WAMADA fees. Two, city employees are proposed to get a 3% raise. There's no debate there. Three, everyone in the city, including all of you on the council, talk about how important the schools are to the success of Falls Church. Without great staff and teachers, there are no great schools. Without salary increases, staff and teachers will leave for another attractive position in a nearby area. There are many of these vacancies. Some have already left. Four, many teachers' salaries have been stagnant for years, with many seeing actual decreases in their paychecks last year due to the rise in insurance premiums. Fifth and finally, we want our staff and teachers to be able to afford to live comfortably, like the professionals they are. Without salary increases, that's just not possible. Please do the right thing and fully fund the school's transfer request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Heidi Lang, followed by Pam Mahoney. Welcome.
Thanks. My name is Heidi Lang, and I live at 5119 Castle Harbor Way in Centerville, and I've served as a teacher at Thomas Jefferson for a little over three decades now. In all of my time working in Falls Church, I've not once come before the city council, but I did feel compelled to do so tonight because of current circumstances. When I was hired, I was made a promise of sorts. I signed a contract and was told that for each year of service, I would move up one step on the salary scale. And yet, that hasn't happened. There are 29 steps on the scale. I've worked at TJ now for 31 years. I should be at the top of the scale, but I'm not. Should have been there for a couple of years, but I'm not. I still have several years to go before I'm at the top of the scale, because on more than one occasion, the school staff has been frozen. We've had years of not receiving steps, years of not receiving cost of living adjustments. And each time, we, as a staff, have been asked to take it on the chin, to tighten our belts, to assume part of the cost of running the school system. We've been implored to keep the big picture in mind, to accept the decisions about the budget, and to do more with less over and over and over. And each time, I have taken it on the chin. I have tightened my belt. I have tried to keep the big picture in mind. I've managed without raises. I've managed without my salary keeping up with the cost of living. I've managed through the years when my take-home pay actually decreased. I've managed when stipends I once received were taken away, though I am still doing the jobs for which those stipends were intended. My commute has become more expensive as gas prices have risen. I've had to refinance my mortgage. I've still had to pay college tuition for a couple of kids. My healthcare costs have increased, and I've been asked to contribute more to the retirement system. But I've accepted all of that, all of the hard times, without complaint, without coming before the council. I've accepted the hard times because, once again, we were told, keep the big picture in mind. And the big picture is that when the times are better, the schools would benefit. All staff would be compensated appropriately, necessary programs would be supported, and positions vital to the well-being of our students would be funded. Well, times are better. Dr. Noonan and the school board proposed a fiscally responsible budget following your guidance. The city has the necessary revenue to fund the school's transfer request, and the initial projection of a 6% tax increase, which voters accepted in droves, won't need to be realized. For years, the school staff has been implored to exercise patience. Tonight, I implore you to honor the promises of the past and to approve the transfer request to the schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Pam Mahoney, followed by Mr. Kelly.
Good evening. My name is Pam Mahoney, and I live at 204 Grove Avenue. I'm here tonight to encourage you to vote to fully fund the schools. Since 2004, there have been two school psychologists in Falls Church. It's been well documented that there's been a significant growth in general and special education enrollment in the past 14 years, yet we still only have two. Two. These two psychologists do extraordinary work that no one else in the system can do. They're required by law to test almost every student who's suspected of having a disability and reevaluate many of them a few years later. Last year, they were required by law to sit in on almost 300 meetings and are tasked to sit by administrators on literally hundreds more as part of student assistance teams at each school. They provide individual and group counseling, consult with teachers, administrators, and parents, and provide professional development to staff. This is an untenable situation for two people. I encourage you to provide funding so that staff can be increased in that area. And as far as the COLA for staff goes, I'm disappointed and increasingly angry that there is discussion again about whether or not Falls Church staff, school staff, and city staff deserve any increase in compensation. When I got here 15 years ago, Falls Church offered matching to staff's retirement plans, more robust tuition reimbursement, more compensation for work we did on our own time, and contributed fully to pensions. All of that's gone, and we know it's never coming back. As Heidi said, we were just told to accept it, and most of us did. But at least we thought we'd get steady salary increases. But now we have to fight for that, too. As has been noted by others, teachers don't go into teaching for the money alone, but we do expect to be compensated fairly. To fill you in on what goes on in the teachers' minds this time of year, other than grading, as jurisdictions publish their pay scales every year and as we get the chance to sign new contracts, there are conversations that take place in every building evaluating the costs and benefits of working in one district versus another. Many staff, like me, choose to stay. Others will leave as they balance the cost of childcare, student loans, homeownership, and commuting with the pay scale and benefits that are offered in other districts. This conversation happens every year, and for a long time, Falls Church would usually win. That may not be the case anymore with many teachers who are younger than me, and most of them are younger than me now, making different decisions. I understand the debt load Falls Church is high. It affects me as a homeowner as well. However, I also understand that every person who owns property in Falls Church, including myself, has benefited financially off of the school's reputation, which is largely built on the staff's reputation. If you vote no, I wonder at what point over the next decade you will see conditions that cause you to believe we deserve a cost of living increase, or a step, or actually both. I ask you to be an ally, ally, to all Falls Church staff, including the teachers and staff, and fully fund the schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Farrell Kelly, followed by Stephanie Oppenheimer.
My name is Farrell Kelly. I'm a teacher at Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School, and I'm the president of the Falls Church City Education Association. At this point, you've heard from me as both an individual and as a representative for Falls Church's educators several times, and since you guys were so kind to celebrate us earlier, I wanted to take a second and celebrate you. I celebrate the council's desire to work hard for vulnerable populations. As educators, we work with vulnerable populations every day. In many cases, the schools are the first place these populations can get access to the services they need. I celebrate the council's desire to maintain a healthy economy for the city. Having just spent several months looking for a house and having browsed many, many listings that tout the schools as a prime selling point, I feel confident that healthy schools are at the heart of the city's economy. I celebrate the council's desire to promote community. In a small community like ours, the schools offer a core opportunity for shared experiences, whether through sporting events or theatrical performances. And I'd like to take a moment just to recommend to everybody here that they take the chance to go see Metamorphosis at the George Mason this weekend. It's gonna be awesome, and you should be there. But also through opportunities to connect, like the Career Fair. And I want to thank those of you who were able to make it to the Career Fair at MEH this past week. I celebrate the council's willingness to make the effort that has been so long delayed to upgrade our city's infrastructure, including the new George Mason and the adjoining economic development that we hope will help propel the city into the future hand in hand. I know that development comes at a cost, and it's one we need to be aware of as a community. I want to celebrate the job you've done to manage those costs thus far, and I trust you to do the same in the future, but there are other costs you may be less aware of. For educators, it is exhausting to go into every budget season feeling as though we need to defend our work and justify our salaries. I work, on average, at least 60 hours a week, and I'm not an outlier. We're already working more hours to accommodate more students with more special needs, and we can be sure that as the full weight of loans for the new high school comes online over the next few years, we'll be asked to share the cost. In a recent editorial, Ms. Hardy mentioned that despite a rosy overall budget outlook this year, there's a need for, quote, "caution against optimism for future years." As public employees, we all have accepted the need to share in the sacrifice when times are hard, but in return, we expect to share in the possibilities when times are good. Right now, the Falls Church budget outlook is better by far than was anticipated just a week ago. If there ever were a solid rationale for refusing to fund a budget that gives our students the teachers they need while offering educators a 3% COLA, even that rationale has vanished. I hope you'll think about the school's importance to the whole community when you cast your vote tonight, but also that you'll remember this as you begin your next year's budget conversation in a few months. It's demoralizing to need to have the same conversation whether times are good or bad. To that end, I hope you'll work with the school board to find a way to make this process less contentious in the years to come, whether through a revenue-sharing plan or some other mechanism that will allow us all a little more predictability for the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for yours. Our next speaker is Stephanie Oppenheimer, followed by Gary Laporta.
Good evening, Mayor Tarter and members of city council. My name is Stephanie Oppenheimer, and I live at 610 North Oak Street. We have two kids, seventh and ninth grade, and I serve on the PTA board for MEH. I'm here tonight as a taxpayer, and I am asking you to fully fund the school board's transfer request. I am a strong supporter of the schools, but I'm also a strong supporter of a government that represents all of its citizens, can pay for capital infrastructure improvements, and is conservative enough with its finances for the oft-mentioned rainy day. The fact that you have brought a tax increase of 6 cents down to 2 and 1/2 cents is remarkable, and I commend you. I know that it is not the result of dumb luck. I consider myself an informed voter and citizen. I remember the 6-cent tax increase that voting for a new high school could mean. I remember when in December, council members suggested a 2% increase as a starting point guidance for departments to follow, which you all voted for 5 to 2. I remember when Mr. Duncan drew a hard line in the sand that he wouldn't go for anything that would make the tax rate go over 3 cents. I've read Ms. Hardy's assertion that she welcomes the hundreds of students who are now living in our city's multi-use apartment buildings, 234 to be exact, which is the equivalent of 10 classrooms of kids and teachers. And I've shared in your pride that our city was named the healthiest community by U.S. News and World Report, which quoted our excellent schools four times in its article about the deciding metrics. So I'm flummoxed that some on council are balking at this 2.8% increase request. It's the smallest since 2012, it doesn't contribute to the tax increase, and it comes during a time that our student population is indisputably growing. Perhaps you also saw that the special needs population at Jesse Thackeray numbered just 15 students in 2014, and now numbers 41. It costs more to educate and support those students, and it's not something that the school system can bow out of. I'm not a person who blindly supports everything the school board or central office asks for. A few years ago, when the One-to-One Laptop Program was rolled out, I organized and led a large group of parents who sought balance, and we questioned the cost of all of that technology during equally tight budget years. When our former superintendent made what I thought was a dubious expenditure, spending $5,700 on 15 Apple watches for staff, I called her out on it, and it was eventually returned to our school's coffers. I mention that because, believe me, if I can get that irate over $5,700, I'm not going to turn a blind eye to the $350,000 that the 0.8 increase represents. So what does the full 2.8 request represent? A COLA increase, an additional school psychologist, additional specialists and counselors to meet required staffing ratios, and personnel to support special ed and leap students. That is not fluff. I'm impressed that you brought the proposed tax increase down to 2 and 1/2 cents. I'm equally impressed that our school board brought its request down from 4.7% to 2.8%. Again, it's the smallest increase request in six years. And by the way, in those six years, our student population has grown by 500 students. That's 21 classrooms of kids. Please fully fund the school board's request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker and last speaker is Gary Laporta.
Good evening, council. My name's Gary Laporta. I live at 301 West Broad Street. I'm speaking here tonight as what might be an unprotected minority group. I'm speaking as an employee of the healthiest, wealthiest, best-educated, most-walkable city in Virginia. We have the best schools, the best library, the greatest farmer's market, excellent parks, and the most engaged voters in the universe. Here we are once again at the annual struggle over our city budget. Each year, the city council presents guidance on what percent of growth they expect to see from the school superintendent's and the city manager. The city's school system proposal is predicated on growth and the need to retain teachers and to keep up with our neighboring jurisdictions in pay and services, and I wholeheartedly support that request. Meanwhile, the city side of the budget is below the recommended growth rate. As our little city continues to grow, the increased pressure is on our schools, excuse me, the increased pressure is not only on our schools but in other areas. Our roads are more traveled. There are more homes and structures that need permitting and inspection. More recycling required, more people want to enjoy our parks and recreation opportunities, more vehicles to register, more business licenses, more taxes to collect, more emergency services needing, more housing support, more, more, more of everything. The most recent third-quarter budget memo noted that city expenses this year would be underestimated because of vacancies in most departments. As one example, our IT department has only half, one-half of its authorized and greatly needed staff. For the first half of the FY19 budget year, our city's staff will be spread across the city with systems that require workarounds to access digital services that are required for the daily operation of our city. I know that 3/10 of 1% does not sound like much, but what unmet needs and services could we deliver with that additional $133,000? City employees cannot continue to do more with less. Please keep this in mind during future budget discussions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that's the last speaker we have for this. That's the last speaker we have currently, so now we're gonna move on, I think, to the report of the city manager. Actually, are there any council requests before we move on? Any council requests? All right, Vice Mayor Connelly.
Mr. Shields, I'm just wondering if there's any update on the VDOT decision on the median removal on Washington Street.
No, that's gonna be a multi-week process, and we're one week into it, but we'll keep the council informed. We have corresponded with VDOT to let them know that the median cut request is at the city's initiative and at the city's request, that this is not a private developer doing this on their own, and that's important information for them. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Snyder, did you have a request?
One quick thing, I wanted to recognize everyone that involved with the Arbor Day celebration on Saturday, and I would ask if there be no objection that we prepare a proclamation recognizing the commitment to the city of Fran Richardson, who passed away a month or so ago. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay, any other council requests? If not, let's move on to the report of the city manager. Mr. Shields, do you have anything this evening or his budget?
Just very briefly, because we know there are people here for the budget, but just two things I wanted to note. On taking the cue on Arbor Day, I wanted to just thank the 30 volunteers who came out to plant trees over the weekend. We did plant 20 trees, and it also is the 40th year that we've been recognized as Tree City USA, and we're the first city in Virginia who was Tree City USA, and so we're the first to meet that 40-year milestone, and it's a very nice plaque recognizing us for that. And also just give thanks to Seth Hemingway and Vipas, who've supported this for so many years, Kate Reich and Jeremy Edwards on the city staff, who've been our staff leads on it. I also will note that the Sunday series for the campus project is ongoing. The next one is scheduled for Sunday, May 20th, at 2:00 p.m. here in this room. We'll be discussing the evaluation process, the RFDP on the West Falls Church Economic Development, and the school design and construction procurement process. So again, that's May 20th at 2:00 p.m., and Dr. Noonan and myself. So again, that's May 20th at 2:00 p.m., and Dr. Noonan and myself will present information and answer questions on the project.
Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to business on the agenda. Let me just ask the city attorney briefly. Can we call all these items together and then have the discussion generally together, or do you have a recommendation?
It's, of course, up to you, but the council can call the three items and have one hearing on the budget plan as a whole.
Okay.
But then I do recommend that you take individual motions when it's time to vote.
Of course, yeah. All right, Madam Clerk, why don't you call the items then, and we'll -- why don't we do that after we call the items?
We have TO 18-02, Ordinance Fixing and Determining the Budget of Expenditures and Revenues Appropriating Funds for the Fiscal Year 2019, General Fund, School Operating Fund, School Community Service Fund, and School Food Service Fund, Cable Access Fund, Sewer Fund, and Stormwater Fund. We have TO 18-03, Ordinance Fixing and Determining the FY 2019 to FY 2024 Capital Improvements Program Budget and Appropriating Expenditure and Revenue Funds for the Fiscal Year 2019. And thirdly, we have TO 18-04, Ordinance Setting the Rate of Tax Levy on Real Estate for Tax Year 2019 and on Personal Property, Machinery and Tools, and All Other Property Segregated by Law for Local Taxation in the City of Falls Church, Virginia for Tax Year 2018. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shields, do you have a staff report for us?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council, members of the public. I do have just a few slides for our last public hearing on the budget.
Before you get into that, the vice mayor and I have a disclosure that I think we probably should read before we get too far into this. Would you like to go first?
I've consulted with the city attorney, and I want to make the following statement as City Council's public hearing regarding TO 18-02, TO 18-03, and TO 18-04. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore I am a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the FY 2019 budget. I can participate in this matter fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Okay, I've also consulted with the city attorney. She's been busy. I want to make the following statement for City Council's public hearing regarding TO 18-02, -03, and 04. My wife is an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore I am a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the FY 2019 budget. However, I can participate in this matter fairly objectively and in the public interest. Mr. Shields, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. So if we could go to the first slide, Cindy, and I will just note that at this -- through the process of the budget, it transforms from the city manager's proposed budget to the community's budget, and this slide just shows all of the outreach and the presentations that were made. When we first presented the budget on March 12th, I think Dr. Noonan and I both thanked all of the staff who worked so hard on this budget. This is principally a budget about the capital improvements program with the major investments we're making in our schools, in our city hall, in our library, and laying a financial foundation for those capital investments. And everyone who worked on these budgets, our department heads, our principals, all of our staff, built these operating budgets with the knowledge of the very significant investments that our taxpayers are making, that the city council is making in our facilities. That was always on our minds, and I think we're proud of the work that we did. But we now want to thank the public for all of the engagement and all of the input that we've gotten, and some of that is listed here. One thing we didn't list also was the 66 questions and responses that we got from the city council, and so it was a very engaging process with lots of detail. And tonight, the purpose is not to go through the detail, but really just to summarize. There is first, next slide, just one piece of housekeeping. In the budget ordinance, and as noted in the staff report, there are these changes. The first one was discussed, 30K for commercial district improvements. Those are funded by the hotel tax, and it's been the council's policy that that hotel tax is dedicated for those commercial district improvements. So that's one change. And then the other two are state grants that we've received, and we want to put into the budget. The first is for EMS, and that will go to the volunteers for the purchase of an ambulance, and that's per air agreement with the volunteers. And then another grant will go to Arlington County for the fire trucks. That's also per air agreement. So with those changes, next slide, the summary chart that you've seen throughout the budget process is slightly changed. The general government budget, which had been showing a 1.7% growth with these grants, is at 2%. The school transfer, this is the option-one budget overview, the school transfer will be $42.3 million, a 2.8% growth over the prior year. The WAMADA request, this has been a significant change that we've worked through just in the last two weeks of our budget process, but what is requested is the equivalent of a half penny or $232,000 for WAMADA for FY 19. That's down from the 1.4 million that really was the full WAMADA budget prior to the General Assembly's actions. There is still the final action that's required for the governor to sign the conference report. We have every indication that that will happen before May 18th, which is the deadline. CIP financing, this is the part of the financing plan for the high school, which we discussed last July, which is to have the funding for the CIP set aside for that project as we go into FY 19 and into FY 20. The pension return on investment, as we have discussed, this is now coming online in full for the first time in FY 19. That also goes for our capital program and then interfund transfers. So the total budget under option-one is a 5.9% growth and a $92.5 million overall general fund budget. The council at its last work session asked for an option-two, and that also is presented. And Cindy, if you could go to the next slide. And so with that, all the numbers remain the same. The school transfer, however, would be a 2% growth, which was the original council budget guidance, and that's a budget of $41.97 million for FY 19, an overall budget of $92.2 million or a 5.5% increase overall in expenditures. So that's a summary of the difference between options-one and two. If we look in the next slide for the revenue requirements, these are numbers the council has seen before. But the debt service, that is a FY 19 revenue impact of just over $2 million. That requires five cents on the tax rate and has a median homeowner impact of $338. This, when we discussed this back in July last year and through the referendum, we indicated that we thought it was going to be six cents would be required in FY 19. That was reduced by one penny due to reduction in the debt that we'll issue in FY -- actually, this spring, from 30 million down to 24 million, and a significant piece of that was a decrease in the architecture and engineering debt issuance for the high school.
Mr. Shields, just to clarify, that's just going to be put off for another year. It's not going away.
Exactly. So that will not go away. We anticipate that next year, those issuances, that roughly $6 million will need to be issued along with the rest of the construction for the high school, and that will require the additional penny. The operating budgets under option-one would allow in of themselves a three-cent decrease in the tax rate or a negative $203 impact on the taxpayer. WAMADA with a half penny is a $34 impact for the median homeowner in the city. So with those, the median home AV growth for the median homeowner in the city is $262, with the two and a half cents that's required for this option-one budget, that's an additional $169 for a total of $431 impact for the median homeowner in the city. So that's option-one. Option-two, then, the debt service figure is the same. The operating budget would be the equivalent of a negative 3.85 cent increase or decrease in the tax rate, or an impact of negative $261 for the median homeowner in the city. The total impact for the homeowner, median homeowner in the city then would be $373. So that's a summary of those two options. I will just note on the next slide, just so that there was a good deal of discussion about property tax relief as we went through the budget, along with 1,000 other details in the budget, but this one was fairly high-profile. The decision was that the allocation of funds remains in the budget. However, the exact policy change with respect to senior tax relief will be worked out with more public input over the next couple of months. The real deadline for enacting that policy change is November 2018. So on the last slide, it's just sort of a one-page summary of the original budget as presented, and then the option-one, and the option-two, and the tax rate differentials between them. And that's summarized here. The only change in rates that is in this budget was on the real estate tax rate. There are no changes to sewer bills, to the stormwater fee, or to any other fees in the city. And so in terms of discussing changes, the focus really has been on the real estate tax rate. So I wanted to provide that sort of baseline of information. We'd be happy to answer any questions the council has, and thank you for all of your work on the budget over the past five, six weeks of our budget season.
Okay. Before we get to questions, I'm going to open this up technically to public comment, although we've heard probably from everyone earlier. Legally, I need to call for public comments, so I'm going to ask if there are anyone who wishes to speak to TO 18-02, which is our budget ordinance before us right now. Seen none?
Mr. Mayor, would --
Okay, all right, come on.
I can put in a slide, but I can't sit here after all these years and not say anything. Why not? Haven't done this in a long while. Lyndi Hockenberry, 1208 Seton Lane. And as most of you know, I've been a long-term employee of the city. I worked, taught school here for 30 years, and during that 30 years, probably all of that 30 years, I was either in the audience, up above Falls Church floors or wherever we happened to be, or I was at the microphone, speaking for benefits and for pay and for our teachers. During that time, we made a lot of progress. We made a lot of changes in the salary scale. We worked a lot on benefits, which I am very, very pleased with, particularly during the late -- before 2000, I'll just say. We got a lot of benefits that I'm still very, very proud of, particularly the paternity and paternity benefits. But along that line, I know we've made a lot of sacrifices. There were a lot of times when I got up here and said, "Look, we know you can't do it, so okay, we're taking it." I also know there's been a lot of promises to the teachers over the time for certain programs that they got involved with, where there was going to be a stipend ongoing, as far as I know. I may be wrong, but there was going to be a stipend for certain efforts that they made for getting further education and state certification. And there's always been something, you know, that we want you to be bigger and better and do the work. And frankly, I think the workload has increased, 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 and the responsibility has increased, much more so than when I started in 1969. So I'm just saying, even from, you know, I've been on your side for eight years, I've been on this side for 30, and then I'll even throw in the last 20, what the heck, 18, actually. But there's got to be somewhere a better way of doing this. And for the city employees who I dearly love, and for the school employees where, you know, where my life has been, always will be, as you know, I still sub. I got to work with teachers, and I got to work with kids because they're the best people on earth. But really, we can't be doing this all the time, begging for dollars. It's not, it's sometimes demeaning, energy-taking. I'm both sides, and I've been there. So, you know, somehow we've got to get it going. I think the requests that were made this year were very, very fair to the school board and to the city, and I think that did an excellent job on that. So, you know, this last little bit of money is ridiculous to hold back on, but that's my two cents worth. But thank you for everything, and thank you for all these folks out here that are pretty darn awesome.
All right. Thank you very much. Unless there's anyone else who wishes to speak right now, I'm going to close the matter to the public. Questions for Mr. Shields? Ms. Hardy?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Shields. Since we actually got the update on Metro after we last met on Monday, I wanted to see whether you could just give the audience and us kind of a recap of where we landed, besides the tax rate impact that you showed us already.
What had the potential to change since our last work session was that Governor Northam had proposed some amendments that would raise additional revenues for WAMADA. Those were in the original Senate bill, which had passed the Senate, but they were not in the House bill. The Senate approved those, agreed with Northam's amendments. The House did not, therefore those amendments failed. But the impact of the lack of the new revenues is that there was a deeper bite into the NVTA funds. What that means for the city is that we had already -- what that means is we get about $1 million a year in NVTA 30% funds, 400,000 of which we will now need to dedicate to WAMADA. We had already built into the budget about $300,000 of NVTA 30% funds to go to WAMADA, so there was a $100,000 delta. So that $100,000 is covered in this half penny to fund other transportation projects, and the remainder, 100,000, is for WAMADA operating. So that's the essential difference.
Is it too early to know what happens to the NVTA 70% funds that we also compete for?
We know that there will be less of them, and that's a big regional problem that we all need to work through, the NVTA, in terms of what that means for everybody's projects. The city does have significant applications pending related to transit and transportation improvements with the development of the campus site. So we'll be working very hard to advocate for those funds, and I know you're doing a lot in that area, the council is, and Councilmember Dave Snyder's been working very hard on that as well.
All right. Other questions? Okay, fair enough. Do we want to move then to comments?
Mr. Mayor, do you want comments or a motion?
Why don't we get a motion on the table, and then we'll go ahead and take comments on it.
I'd like to move approval of option-one, which is the school transfer, a 2.8 increase over FY 18, and that's for TO 18-02.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Z, on the second, comments? Does anyone wish to make any comments? All right, do we want to go to a vote? Mr. Z?
The city's annual budget should never be zero-sum activity. This year presented the need to increase the total real estate tax to fund Metro, to address obsolete city facilities, and to fund debt service for capital to prepare ourselves for truly epic bonding for a new high school. School board and the new superintendent heard council say that belt tightening was needed. They presented us with a no-drama budget that, but for the capital needs, would have been accommodated within the current tax rate. I said that anything less than organic growth, at that time projected to be 3%, would be acceptable, and they presented 2.8%. Earlier during my time on council, I thought against trying to achieve parity with Arlington at such a rapid rate. So it's surely no surprise Arlington just approved a 2-plus percent increase to their school budget. For facts, we'll undoubtedly do more. Once you recognize that we live in a cost-competitive regional environment, there's just no going back when you make parity at the current standard. We can certainly expect additional spending increases from adjoining jurisdictions. Earlier this week, I asked from our city's Budget Finance Committee if we characterized schools' annual request year-over-year compared against what they ended up with and the effect on the tax rate. The current budget request is the smallest increase over seven consecutive years, and it comes at a time where we're feeling more confident about the contours of our financial future. In fact, the year-to-year transfer rate during that period of time I mentioned was as high as 12.4%. Last year, I pledged that should the bond referendum pass, that I would do everything necessary to make this the best project possible. No. No, it will not get easier as time goes on if we allow all that hard work to get to parity backslide, not when we're about to take on four times our current debt over the next few years. Simply, we cannot afford to stand up with a bright, shiny new high school and middle school campus and allow ourselves to be teacher and staff poor. Since last November, the Commonwealth has gone a long way to addressing the metro shortfall. We have also managed to kick the can down the road on bonding an additional $8 million for this budget season. Above all, remember that this request is COLA, cost of living, does not go to the base. I expect that we will need to re-litigate that aspect next time. Moreover, the request is somewhat symmetrical, with the increase on the city's staff side as well. Finally, I will not be the one to say that our school system doesn't need additional counseling and psychologists, or that we need increased class sizes. I believe the schools have done everything that we've asked them to do to present a lean, reasoned request. And that's why I'm prepared to support the 2.8% request and the 2.5% increase in the tax rate for the coming year.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else wish to make any comments before we move to a vote? Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everyone who's here, everyone who's submitted emails, and by my rough calculation, there are about two dozen emails in support of the 2.8% increase for the school transfer. I want to make a couple of points about the process. Yes, it is a difficult process, but frankly, it's our job to ask tough questions, and I did of the superintendent. I think we spent about a half an hour at least here together. All the council members really quizzed both our city manager and the schools, and frankly, that's part of our job, to make sure that we're doing what we need to do in terms of public service, but we're also doing what we need to do from the standpoint of the people that are financing all of this. And I think this council has done that job. I was impressed this year in particular with the job that our managers did on the city's side as well as on the school's side. So it seemed to me that the right thing to do was to approve option one. We may not always be able to do this, but this year we can and we should do it. On the Womata, there was an awful lot of work on the part of advocacy groups, the governor, our representatives in the General Assembly, this council, the staff. Transportation funding is a very complicated issue these days and requires almost 24/7 attention, and it's gotten it. And as a result, we are further along on metro funding than I thought we ever would have been at this point. So that's good news for everybody, and good news for our budget, but more particularly good news for our region, considering how reliant we are on it. So I fully support option one. I think it's the best approach. I think we can do it. I think we should do it. But please understand, everyone, that partly it's our job to ask the tough questions, and members of the council have done, in my view, their job. So I want to end with, I got an email from Beth Green, and this one really hit me. She said that, she talked a lot about her work, and then she said about enrichment. She said, "I provide all materials and supplies, from books to strategic games to paper clips and pencils, with my own money, on a teacher's salary." Well, I think we need to do better. So that's why I'm voting the way I am, but also, we're taking care of what we ought to be doing. We're maintaining world-class schools. We're maintaining world-class city services. I think that's what we're put here to do. And at the same, we're put here to be careful and deliberate, and I think we've done all that as well. So I want to end where I began. Thank you, citizens. Thank you for all the input, and thank you to our public servants who do such a great job.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've had the unique opportunity to explore this budget process with a bit of an outsider's perspective, and as a new member of city council and as someone who's only experienced this through public meetings and local press, I have felt empowered all along to question and even cast aside what some refer to as budgeting tradition, business as usual, the status quo, or simply just the way things are done. The passion, attention, rigor, and care that has been poured into this budgeting process by city and school staff, both citizens and non-residents, is a testament to our community values. It can be thankless, depending on where you sit, yet incredibly rewarding knowing that every rock has been turned and every angle has been explored, because at its core, managing the revenue and expenses of our city is one of the single biggest decisions that we make each year. Each tax dollar being weighed throughout this process is precious. Each tax dollar is generated through the hard work and productivity of a person or business in this community. Each of these tax dollars are a representation of the sacrifices we make for our families and to support our community. That's why so many work so hard to allocate these dollars, save these dollars, and grow these dollars. And I think maybe sometimes that principle gets lost in the noise of this process. But I am reassured and invigorated, based on my numerous and in-depth conversations with the scores of individuals I've spoken to over the last few months regarding our budget, and this budget in particular, that these principles are alive and well, and that those I have encountered only want what is best for Falls Church, that I'm certain of. And what is best and what needs to be committed to right here and now, this year, is a new way forward. A meeting of the minds and a collective understanding, through a handshake or otherwise, that we will not continue to operate that we have been operating. The status quo in this budgeting business as usual, in my opinion, as someone who runs a business and sits on council, is a very flawed process. I've listened, studied, read, explored, and digested every bit of information I could over these past months, and what is clear to me is that our budgeting process fails to live up to the best that we have to offer as elected members and employees of this community. This year's process began based on a budget guidance issued during a time of uncertainty around Womata, which threatened to hit our budget by more than $1 million, 1.4 to be exact. At the same time, we were grappling with several capital obligations that have taken our city into uncharted territory. Six cents was allocated to meet all of these obligations in addition to operations. We now stand at two and a half cents, through careful budgeting, cutting expenses, tightening of belts, and some fortunate timing. Progress, of course, and a relief, no doubt, but no cause to celebrate, in my opinion. We are still staring down huge obligations in the years going forward that must be balanced and attended to. And we will undoubtedly face very difficult times economically as a community and country in the not-too-distant future as well. Economic cycles do what they do best, which is to end only to start again, and we are approaching the end of a very prolonged and robust economic recovery. We're going to need everyone in this room committed to planning for our community, not just their corner, the entire community, because we will most certainly face much tougher budgetary conversations in the next few years, and I want everyone on the same page personally and rowing in the same collective direction to navigate these difficult waters. Because it is shameful that what could be an exercise in community building and productive long-term planning becomes a public spectacle that involves finger-pointing, accusations, and a parade of city staff, teachers, and the most vulnerable of our population having to grovel and prove their worth within the context of a $90 million budget. We all know what we need to do, we just need to commit to do it. I think we can, because being in a small city has huge benefits during this process, which we have failed to take advantage of. We're two square miles with 14,000 residents. Our school board members and city council members live down the street from the teachers and government employees that we work with throughout this progress. We're not drawn across party lines. We're all here in the moment, living, breathing, and experiencing the decisions that we make every single day. I see no reason that we can't fulfill our individual obligations for the services we provide through a commitment to set budgets across the board based on all of the known data that we have at the time. I realize that there existed a level of distrust between previous councils and school boards, and that folks felt obligated to dig their heels in and resist on all sides, staking out territory in some kind of fiscal arms race. But based on the discussions I have personally had with each member of the council and school board, and numerous city staff during this budget process, I truly believe that this particular council, and this particular school board and superintendent, and these staff members, many of which have new faces on all sides, individually and collectively, have the city's best interests at heart. These folks are thoughtful, informed, and impassioned, some more stubborn than others, for sure, but committed to doing what is right overall. And based on what I have seen, the only thing holding us back is a commitment from the various stakeholders to sit down prior to a budget guidance being issued to determine how much baseline revenue is available in the context of both short and long-term fiscal obligations. And then after we know what we need to save, where we can cut to run more efficiently, we identify what needs should be addressed, and then we do what we're all hired or elected to do and provide for the community, our community. I have received a commitment from several in city councils and a number of members on the school board that going forward, we will develop our budgets with all cards on the table. Once this budget season closes, I've been assured that we will sit down together and discuss a number of strategies to eliminate the need to fight over a few hundred thousand dollars each year that threatens to open up old wounds and pull us back into old habits. Despite what some may say behind keys on a message board, our future is very bright here in Falls Church. Our best days are ahead. We have a strong community and a vision of building the next generation of leaders through our schools and by way of example as neighbors, activists, and concerned citizens. I live in Falls Church for a lot of things, but what gives me the most pride is that we can serve as a living example of what a complete community can look like, a beacon of hope during some otherwise dark times. We've made huge strides in a number of areas that have come at a critical time. We've planted seeds on the economic development front. We have navigated tough avenues related to capital projects and shaved costs across the board to better position ourselves to address millions in long-term debt service, all of which, after conservative planning and smart policy moves, have put us on a solid path to weather the storms ahead. And I am still optimistic and committed to lowering our tax rate through economic growth and cost control. But here we sit today, examining two budgets that are less than a few hundred thousand dollars apart, precious dollars, as I have pointed out before, and never to be taken lightly. However, these budgets were developed in the context of a budget guidance that frankly, I'm not sure was even the right guidance, given all of the facts that I've had the opportunity to review. But that is beside the point, and certainly was not mine to own at the time. As a member of the Budget and Finance Committee, I have taken the opportunity to review the city's budget and our financial position in detail, and thanks to the countless hours school board members have spent with me going through their budget, I feel very well-informed. Overall, these are good budgets, thoughtful, lean, and drafted with solemn vigilance towards preparation for the huge obligations that are underway that will benefit us all. And that may be hard to believe for some that are predisposed to meet this process with skepticism. I understand and appreciate that, because the truth is, you can always find more to cut, and we can always agree to pay people less, but the real science behind a budget is understanding where you spend and what you cut or limit to improve the whole, and also understanding what you don't sacrifice at certain times, because doing so will undermine the values and long-term success of the entity that you are responsible for growing. I have personally made that mistake in the past in business and learned from that mistake. Your people are the single most important part of any entity, community or business. They drive growth, train the next generation, and set in motion every cog in the machine. I feel these budgets have accomplished that very goal. They are mindful of sacrifices we need to make for future planning, and they consider the people that make the future a reality. We have many more miles to go as a city, and we will need a united front to face down the economic and fiscal headwinds that we are sure to encounter together. My hope is that we continue to move forward as a community with an eye towards fiscal restraint. I am confident we will, as I believe these budgets illustrate that very philosophy of thoughtful and careful planning for the future. Because of that, I am voting to fully fund the city and schools' request for fiscal year 2019. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Duncan, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's think ahead to a year from now, because of the work that we've done before and that we do here tonight. The bigger and better Mount Daniels is up and running. Renovated and expanded city hall is reoccupied. We're ready to get underway on the library renovation and expansion. Gravesfield has a new turf. Stormwater system improvements are ongoing. And we will be on the brink of undertaking the biggest infrastructure and economic development project in the city's history. For me, everything about this budget cycle has been about reserving taxing capacity for the George Mason High School-West Falls Church project in 2019, because I am committed to building a new high school for multiple generations to come and determined to do so at a reasonable tax rate. Last fall, when we were considering the high school bond referendum, I never believed it would be necessary for us to raise the tax rate six cents this budget cycle. As it turned out, I was right, because many cost and revenue drivers broke in our favor. In September, we got a breather on school enrollment, when it showed virtually flat. Through the winter, the monthly federal CPI report showed inflation running less than 2.5%. Nothing happened in the national or local economy to cut into a significant bump up in the property assessments in January. Most importantly, economic growth in the city remains tops in the region. All this, anti-fiscal management, and a little good luck, gave us, we learned last week, a $300,000 surplus on the general government side and a carryover contingency of nearly that much on the school side. So we didn't need six cents, or 5.5, or 4.5, or 2.5. The budget option in tonight's packet that follows the council's December guidance vote for 2% growth in operating spending calls for a 1.65 cent tax increase. And if we chose to repurpose into tonight's budget the general government and schools' year-end surpluses, we could pull that tax rate down further, while still funding a 3% COLA for all city and schools' employees. I would set the tax rate increase at a penny and change for one reason, so we could head into 2019 and the $120 million high school project with plenty of room in the tax rate to adapt to the unexpected. A downturn in local or national economy that negatively impacts assessments, an overrunning construction cost for the new high school, a delay in receiving the upfront payment we're counting on from a private developer to help defray the cost of the high school. Whatever this council decides tonight on the budget, I will respect that choice and will happily work as hard as I can to make things come out right for the Mason High School-West Falls Church project, which I've strongly supported from the beginning and for all the people and interests in our community. To be clear, while I may be more fiscally cautious than some, I think we have amazing opportunities to make Falls Church a better, stronger city, one that all generations can afford to call home. Sure, we face some daunting obstacles, but the trademark of this council is that when we face a challenge, we plan and act. We assess the challenge, consider solutions, pick one, and move forward, especially when it comes to major infrastructure projects, because we all know that borrowing money to finance them is not getting any cheaper. The budgets before us tonight would do many good and important things. Our hard-working public employees, of course, deserve more pay, and they will receive a salary boost above inflation. Our modernized city hall will be more convenient, accessible, and safe, and thank you to our city hall employees for enduring the hassle of moving out, camping for now in cramped temporary quarters, and moving back in next year. There will be more tax relief for our most income-stressed senior citizens. There is money to continue our work on neighborhood traffic calming. Not enough money, mind you, but then there's never enough money to do all the things we want, is there? And we're at least starting to talk again about strategies for increasing our financial commitment to dedicated workforce and affordable housing, an area in which we are woefully under-invested. I'll close by thanking all those who have shared with me their views on the budget in writing and in conversations around town. I especially appreciate school board members Litten and Anderson and others who have taken the time to write their thanks to the council for our activism on economic development. The work over the past 20 years of growing our local economy is now generating millions in net revenues, money that enables Falls Church City to aspire to the highest standards in municipal services, public education, and schools and city employee compensation at a tax rate that most residents deem reasonable. By continuing to move forward on economic development, we can become the envy of every jurisdiction in the Commonwealth. Those of us on council are privileged to represent an intelligent, articulate, and persistent citizenry, one that expects excellence in all fields of endeavor. I appreciate the opportunity to be one voice in the conversation about how to weigh and rank our community's many legitimate competing needs.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Connolly?
So a lot has been said tonight, and I had a few eloquent remarks planned, but everyone else has taken all my words. So I'm just going to say one thing that only I can say, really, and that is that every time I sit here and we talk about budget, I have to read the statement that says, "I am an employee of Falls Church City School Board, and therefore I'm a member of a group of three or more persons." So I want to thank all the other employees of Falls Church City School Board who are here tonight, and I want to thank you for all you do every day, because when I come into your classrooms and your schools, I'm just so impressed with how you treat our children, how you work together, and all the amazing things that happen in our schools. As we go forward with this budget, and I'm going to support the one that has been moved, I think there's a few things that we've learned this year and that we need to do better in the future. Mr. Lichtenhouse hit on those as the new person, and one of those is that the Budget and Finance Committee needs to do a deep dive into a revenue-sharing agreement. We know what our cost drivers are every year, and we always wait, and I kind of imagine it sort of like a clock, and one piece goes and then another piece goes, and I think we need to be able to look at that in July and in August and try to figure out where we're going to be next year, so we're not in this situation again next year. And there still will be some pieces that we need to figure out towards the end, but we'll have a much better sense together collaboratively of where we're going. And the other thing that has come up a lot in this budget is how can the general government and the school staff work and the school staff work together? And there are a lot of ways. And sometimes we say, "Well, maybe we should combine departments." But there are other ways to do that without combining departments, and that is to make sure that we really are operating as one organization and serving the whole city in the best way that we can. So I also happen to be the chair of the Government Operations Committee. So now I've gotten two things on my two committees that we need to work on going forward, and I do pledge to do that.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. So those who read my blog post know that brevity is not my strong suit, so I'd say get comfy and hang on, because I do think my comments are a bit lengthy tonight. So in general, I think there are a lot of good things to acknowledge about this year's budget, and I don't think we take enough stock to recognize how fortunate we are as a community, especially compared to our peers in the region, much of Virginia and the country. I think we need to acknowledge that we are in a really good place. I've got, I think earlier there were comments that there were five things that they want to talk about the budget. So I've got five things I think have been good and five things that I think it could have been better. So starting with the good. So if the full budget passes as proposed, the fact that we're giving 3 percent raises on both the general government and school employee side, which I stated early on, that equity across the entire city is an important principle for me. So I think that is important. On the salary note, as a whole, teacher salaries, I believe from the work session we learned, that are within the 3% to 5% goals set several years ago by the previous superintendent compared to Arlington. And if you recall from our work sessions, we'd be within 1% of Arlington if the full budget passes. I realize this is really just professional staff, but let's make sure we give pause on achieving one of the highest salaries in the area for teachers, as it clearly shows our commitment to education. And I can't take credit for that. I think councils before me made that commitment. I think for a little city of our size with a fraction of the tax base compared to anyone else in that top echelon, I think it's important to recognize that remarkable achievement. Arlington, which we often compare ourselves to, actually faced a $25 million revenue shortfall this year due to the real estate valuations being dragged down by commercial. That shortfall was split across the county and schools because of their revenue-sharing agreement. And while they gave raises, there were also layoffs across the county, and there were class-size impacts in the schools. I think we're in a good place, and we don't have to worry about that this year. Third, we're setting aside some money for expansion of tax relief for seniors, which is an important show of commitment towards our social values and towards economic sustainability via more diverse demographics. I think there's more discussion to be had, and I think we're going to continue to working on that. I'm a little concerned about how many people will actually help, but I think in general, any expansion that's fair to the rest of the taxpayers is a good thing, and it's an important step to make that commitment now in this year's budget. Fourth, as we've talked about already, Metro turned out way better than expected, and many thanks to Mr. Snyder, staff, and state representatives for pushing hard for the region. Going from 2 and 1/2 cents to half a cent, especially if it paves the way for future funding, is important. However, don't think we are done. Much of the region has fallout transportation impacts, because we have robbed Peter to pay Paul. We're also going to continue to have other big transportation funding issues. Many term at the Virginia fiscal cliff that's going to come in future years' budgets. So I don't want any of us to be surprised when we have other things that talk about transportation needs again. Fifth, the last good thing. Finally, I think we're in the first year of a multi-year capital plan, and we know that's a big lift for us. The fact that the projected 6 to 15 cents needed to fund the capital plan is partially offset by 3 cents in operational savings is a cause for celebration. The 3 cent savings is mostly because revenues are strong and there was operating budget discipline. I was one of five who voted for 2 percent guidance last year because of this ambitious capital plan, similar to the principle of a budget diet much like the city took on when building MEH, and that was a fraction of the amount of bonding and risk we're about to take on next year. The guidance wasn't arbitrary. I don't think I need to remind anyone about the size of the debt we're taking on, the debt per capita, and the other very scary, scary metrics. And I recognize I advocated for this 120 million option, because it really was the best out of the many options we looked at, but it doesn't mean that the risks on the horizons don't give me pause. I think we'd be foolish to think that we're going to have it this good every year. To be able to start the first year of this big plan with three pennies of savings, we really had the perfect storm of many things: flat student enrollment, strong revenues, and increased property values. We can continue to do our part with economic development to keep revenues going, but we have a lot of debt coming, and we won't be immune to a national recession when the time comes. So those are the good things, at least, why not with the good things? On the flip side, here's what I think we could have done better. First, the bottom-line impact for many is still significant. Yes, 2 and 1/2 cents, way better than 5 and 1/2 cents or worse. But because of the increased property assessments, the median homeowner will still have to pay $431 more. And you know what? While I'm not the newest elected number up here, I have not forgotten the 3,000 doors I knocked on a few years ago. Not everyone can afford $431 easily. And now that we know that the state and local tax deduction cap is a certainty, it means more people will have a federal tax burden. With our tax rate much higher than our peers already, we should be concerned that the tax rate is not an endless spigot where we can tax our way to more spending. Number two, while we're on the topic of affordability, we still haven't done anything in this budget to address housing affordability. There is a timing issue between discussions with the Housing Policy Work Group that's underway, so my hope is that that will wrap up so we can get serious about it in next year's budget. Because frankly, the gap between the have and have-nots is only getting bigger, and while it's an issue everywhere, it's even more pronounced in Falls Church. And it's not just teachers who can't afford to rent or buy here. And frankly, I think they deserve so much more than the 3 percent raise proposed, because even if we gave them 10 percent raises, which I personally would love to do, it frankly doesn't address how the profession is undervalued as a whole and doesn't help them overcome the high cost of living in Northern Virginia. I am saddened when the arguments for budget funding devolve into, "You must fully fund the budget request, because teachers can't afford to live here, or you must not support teachers." Let's also not forget the paraprofessionals, police officers, restaurant servers, artists, and many others who rely on to be an important part of a complete community who don't make a living wage and can't afford to be here. When we reflect back on the goals and the values of our town, we simply are not doing enough, not just for teachers, but for many others. I also believe we're not addressing the fundamental issue of competitive pay in certain teacher salary bands where we know there are gaps. We heard very eloquently from Mr. Kelly, who spoke to us last time and this time again, and there are probably many others out there. Again, post-budget, the school board gets to decide how the transferred money is spent, and I certainly hope that the school board and superintendent will tackle that in future years, because while 3 percent COLA is equitable across the board, it doesn't address the root cause of Mr. Kelly's concerns. Number three, likewise, there are many unfunded needs across the city that we haven't addressed. I'm not just talking about the mayor's M&amp;M's there. I won't go through them all. My point is not to show whose unfunded list is better. We should all think about what makes a complete community, and it can't just be about schools all the time. Number four, it's not about the money in this year's budget. We are really only $350,000 apart, which is insignificant, really, when we're talking about a $93 million budget. Instead of squabbling over $350,000, I think we'd be working together to rally the same kind of community support we saw tonight, to advocate, for example, for a $15 million grant that we've applied to build walkability improvements at Haycock-Broad and Shreve intersection that would help students and commuters more safely travel through there. When I did the math, that is 45 times the amount of money being debated here, and of course, Mason, which I'll get to shortly. Fifth, overall, what I think we could do most better, or have the most opportunity to improve, is really the tone and deliberations in the community. It's not how we should be working together. I had high hopes that we would have a more candid and open conversation this year, but I feel like, once again, we're in this divisive budget battle, which is very disappointing. As this is my third budget session, I've compared this one to the past two, and I've reflected on what we can do better. To be frank, this has been very similar to my first year, which I think by many accounts was ugly, when there were calls to bring out pitchforks to lobby for the budget. The messaging and tone this year, again, felt like my first year. Instead of class sizes, this year we were beaten over the head about COLAs and psychologists. It's disappointing that we resorted to taking sides, divisiveness, guilt-shaming, again. And I know that many people have seen this play out way before my time. I certainly appreciate the candor in Chairman Webb's email to us over the weekend, and I told him as such when we spoke, where he said, "If council decides to reduce the school board's requests, we plan to use the funds to provide a 3 percent COLA to staff. As a parent, I'm glad that COLA is a top priority." I would have appreciated that candor much earlier in the process. As Mr. Lickenhouse says, "All cards should be on the table." Yes, there are other trade-offs that would have to be made, and I understand those trade-offs would also be tough and unpalatable, but it's misleading for citizens to have to write us about the soundbite about COLAs being on the table without the context of other things in the budget. The most disappointing part of the process to me is really the lack of positive intent. For the amount of hours I have personally spent on this budget, reading every single document, asking questions, hearing from citizens, holding office hours, writing blog posts, so that people can intelligently engage, be told that I'm asking too many questions, or that I haven't taken the time to understand the information, or that I'm being stubborn, is really just offensive. It is my job to ask questions, and it's all of our jobs. Assuming a different point of view does not mean laziness or stubbornness, and is ultimately detrimental to the integrity of the process. So when there are places of disagreement, what I try to do is I start from a place to understand where people could be coming from. We have different information in front of us, and therefore draw different conclusions. That's why I spend so much time doing this, so that people have the opportunity to work off the same data that I have. We have such an engaged and smart community that I believe if we give them accurate information, they can intelligently engage, even if we end up in a different place, and that is okay. Budget setting should be a rational process and can be if we all, just for a second, consider that there are multiple points of view out there. We are all trying to do the right thing, balancing multiple needs with the individual lens that we wear. Let's stop taking artificial sides. So in conclusion, so some of us take pride in the funding levels for our schools and other important services in the community, but the rate of growth cannot be sustainable in the long run. We can't afford to increase the tax rate every year. We have a lot of needs, and while we got lucky this year in a few fronts, I worry, long-term, about the pace of our needs outstripping the pace of growth. While the revenue pie is slowly adding more to our commercial tax base, which means we need to keep the pipeline of projects going, the impact still largely falls on residential homeowners. With the tax rate much higher than our peers, we're turning into a pretty homogeneous community with residents who have little incentive to live here except for having children in the schools. It creates an affordability downspiral and future sustainability issues as a city if we only have residents who can afford to live here from K through 12 and then move out because of high taxes. We need to have room in our tax rate for unforeseen needs, and with so many capital projects, there will be unforeseen needs. In a year when we're just starting off on a capital plan, being conservative is responsible. And George Mason is the big thing coming. In order to pull that off, we need to be collaborative, and we need to start from a place of compromise. That project is too big to fail and too big to be about city versus schools, and we need to work in concert. We need to balance the economic development on the site in order to afford the $120 million school. The two need to mesh well so for both to be successful. It needs to incorporate community needs and not just school requirements and so forth. All those are compromises. And so that we can keep our eye on the prize, I will support this year's budget because of the good things in the budget and the fortune of having the tax rate increase lower than predicted, but not because I condone the tone of the discussion or the tactics used. My hope that this show of good faith means we can get serious about a couple of things. One, we need to look for cross-city efficiencies. I've asked for it for my third year now, and I specifically added it to guidance, but we still haven't seen any movement. Because we're not going to get so lucky again in future years, we are too small of a city and we'll have too much debt not to look at creative options that lean out our budgets. Second, I sincerely hope that we also make some big changes in the budget process and the interpersonal interactions, that we graciously accept input, listen to tough questions, and have real discussion instead of soundbites. Let's take out the emotional warfare that is the budget process, and whether that's revenue sharing or some other more neutral framework to guide budget allocations. To quote Mrs. Hockenberry, which I loved, "There's got to be a better way." If we're going to succeed together, we should be partners here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let me wrap up then. Let me start by saying I will support the budget that fully funds the school request and the amount of 2.8 percent school transfer increase, in an effort to have unity going through the critical campus project. But I would like to offer the following. As a parent of three children in the schools and with a wife that works in the schools, I have as much interest in the success of the schools as anyone up here on this dais. No matter how important the schools are to me personally, however, as mayor, I must balance the interests of the city as a whole. With this year's tax increase, we've now raised taxes six times in the last 10 years, over 11 and 1/2 cents. Raising taxes every year is not a sustainable business model. Many of us voted for the full CIP with the understanding that we'd be conservative in our operating spending. These new capital projects will add $177 million of new debt to our city books in the near future. If this doesn't make you nervous, it ought to. For those who claim victory and say the new school's been accomplished with less than a 6 cent tax increase that was discussed, I say not only has a new school not been yet completed, it hasn't even been designed, nor do we have a commercial partner for our 10 acres. Cost overruns, change orders, unexpected conditions are the norm, not the exception in real estate development. Projects estimated years in advance rarely come in under budget. Our most recent capital experience, Mount Daniel, cost 20 percent more than estimated and delivered 20 percent less student seats. We have an extraordinary once-in-a-lifetime challenge ahead of us with a new high school and other capital projects, and we should be conservative in our fiscal approach. We're not like private developers, who, when things go bad, we can just declare bankruptcy and move on. As the spouse of a support staff person at the schools, I'm well aware of the pay situation in our schools. I'm told with this budget, Falls Church teacher salaries are essentially in parity with the highest teacher salaries in Northern Virginia, within 1% of Arlington. This is certainly something to be proud of, and it's an extraordinary accomplishment for a community that also has the smallest commercial tax base in the region. But let us not forget that our police officers, sanitation workers, inspectors, and other city employees are not among the highest paid in the area, not even close. They're in the middle of the pack. Ultimately, the schools decide how to spend their money, and of course, everyone deserves a COLA, or more. Teachers, people who work in schools, are underpaid throughout the whole United States and certainly in this city. But this budget doesn't appear to address some of the specific and apparent pay discrepancies we heard about from Mr. Kelly and certain other teachers. As I understand it, this is across-the-board pay increase, which is great, but there appear to be anomalies, as Mr. Kelly discussed at some of his prior hearings here, that don't appear to be addressed, and it sounds likely will be with us again next year. We're working hard on economic development. I believe our recent progress is remarkable, with the Harris Teeter, Target, Aldi's, BJ's, Hilton Garden Inn, the Broad and Washington New Office Building, and Northside Social, among other new developments actively sought and attracted to the city. However, exceeding budget guidance year after year is also not a sustainable business model, especially in years like this one where student enrollment is essentially flat. We need to get our operating budgets under control, or we won't be able to afford the big things that really matter. Many have voiced concern about Falls Church affordability and diversity, yet the tax relief we are contemplating impacts but a few, and applies only to disabled veterans, seniors, and those who are fully disabled. For middle-class taxpayers, there is no relief. Those in an average, single-family home are surely approaching $1,000 per month in property taxes. Let us not squeeze out those of modest means. For these reasons, I'm concerned about approving a budget that once again exceeds guidance. However, we have a new superintendent and other major school undertakings that will have the best chance with united city leadership. As I said, I will support the full school request, but I will remain cautious and conservative until we've completed our new high school and other major capital improvements. Okay. Do you want to go for the vote, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. All right, now we've got the next item on the agenda, which is TO-18-03, which is our capital improvement program. Mr. Shields, do you have anything to add for this particular item?
Well, I would just note, this is the most important part of the budget. But there is nothing, there is no staff report associated with this.
All right, I'm going to call for any public comment on this matter. Is there any public comment on TO-18-03? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Are there any questions for Mr. Shields? All right, is there a motion with regard to TO-18-03?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt TO-18-03.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Are there any questions or comments to be made?
Just one quick comment. When you look at the CIP, it gives you a sense about the true scope of what this city is all about. city is all about, and it also says, because we've got a whole page on transportation, how important all the effort is that staff and everybody else puts in on transportation stuff, because it's a long list and a lot of money, and a lot of it's grant money. So with that, that's all I can comment on.
All right, we've got a motion on the table. Is there anything else to be said?
Yeah, I had a request. I know we asked for this, and it's in the Q and A, but I think because we've been showing the tax chart so often, could we make sure that on our future CIP presentations, we show kind of the revised, this one, median homeowner with tax yield? Because I think we've pushed out the $7 million of debt, but yet TJ got pushed out, so it was kind of essentially offsetting. I think it's important to just be able to show, oh, sorry, show what that new version looks like because of those changes that were made to the CIP. It was a very popular chart last summer, so I just want to make sure that we show it again.
Okay. All right, unless there's anything else, let's go ahead, and Madam Clerk, will you call the vote? We have a motion, a second.
Yes, sir. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the next item, which is TO-18-04 regarding the tax rate. Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak to this item? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Are there any questions for Mr. Shields? Any comments? Do we have a motion?
Well, if I could just note that at line 106 in the ordinance, with the council's action on the budget, then the tax rate would be 1.355.
All right, do we have any questions? Do we have a motion? Mr. Z?
I move to adopt TO-18-04 with a real estate tax rate of $1.355.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, do I call for public comment on this? I can't even remember. All right, any comments from council members? If not, Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
I was just double-checking your public hearing. You did call it. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Mayor Charter? Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Let's call the next item, please.
We have TO-18-06 on first reading. Ordinance to vacate cul-de-sac turnaround portion of the unimproved Public Street right-of-way of Oak Haven Drive, being adjacent to Lot 10, Oak Haven subdivision.
All right, before we get on with this, this is the case we talked about. I'd like to read a statement. "I have consulted with the city attorney, and although it's not strictly required, I wish to state the following before city council's consideration of TO-18-06. As part of my private law practice, I have on occasion done work for Sunnyside LLC, contract purchaser of the property owned by the applicant for the vacation. Therefore, in order to avoid even the appearance of impropriety, I am choosing to recuse myself from consideration of the proposed ordinance of vacation." And I'm going to turn it over to the Vice Mayor then for this matter.
Go ahead then, Mr. Fuller.
Yes, thank you. Gary Fuller, Deputy Planning Director. I'll just be brief tonight. I'll introduce also Chris Matthews. He's the attorney for the applicant, and so he's here. We're both here basically for questions tonight. I will just introduce the item. It's a vacation of a public street right-of-way, and it's as simple as a turnaround was originally dedicated, half of it, if you look at Attachment 2, you can see the crescent. It's not on the other side of the street, and so it was dedicated on one side for a turnaround eventually at the end of the street by the developer at the time. That street was subsequently extended further, and the turnaround built. And so we did check, and there's no half moon on the other side that needs to be vacated as well. So this would clean that up, and then we would put it back on the tax rolls and so forth. I wrote a staff report that talks about the process, and so I'm here for any questions as well as Mr. Matthews. Thank you.
Does anyone have questions?
Yeah, I do.
Do I need to open for? Okay, Mr. Snyder.
So is this, who owns this property right now?
It's under a contract by this Sunnyside, and there's two owners, Alexandra and Patricia Batista.
Right. Who owns, though, the little half moon thing? Is that city-owned right now?
That is city-owned right now. That's part of the public street.
So are you proposing, then, to turn this over? You're proposing to turn city property over to the landowner, and the city's getting nothing in return?
Oh, no. We would charge for the property.
Right.
And then it would be on the tax roll.
That's what I wanted to get out, right. You'll charge the appraised value, whatever the right value is for the property.
Yeah, the value would be based on an outlot price, so in other words, you know, it's not an additional buildable lot. This would make this property conform to the minimum square foot for a lot. It's just under it now. It'll put it just above it. It also would allow for a home to be typically fronting along the street. Right now, it's, it would have to be set back too far because of this arc, so that would help clean that up.
Okay. And we don't have any use in terms of the turnaround right there?
There's, there's no apparent use. I will refer it out to all the, you know, the Fairfax Water, our water and sewer, and then the rest of the city staff to look at trees and so forth. So we will look at that in the interim between first and second reading and make sure there's nothing that we need to obtain, any kind of easement for utility and so forth, so.
Okay, thank you.
Ready for motion?
I'm ready to move it.
And Vice Mayor, I move to grant first reading TO-18-06, refer the planning commission and city staff for recommendations, schedule a public hearing in second reading for June 11, 2018, and advertise the same according to law.
Second.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter recused himself. Thank you, motion carries. Should we call the?
Just leave it out there.
We're getting the mayor.
Just do it out there.
We're on consent now.
And we're on to consent items, sir.
Yeah, that's going to happen. All right, so let's move on to the consent agenda item. Is there anyone who wishes to remove any item from the consent agenda? Mr. Snyder?
I don't wish to remove any, I, I do think there's some clarification that regarding the work on the City Hall that's mentioned here, that that's under the previously approved CIP amount. That is not in addition to, is that right?
That is correct, Councilmember Snyder. Those are, these are all within the budget that has already been approved for the City Hall project. These are two contracts to carry out work under that larger project.
Thank you.
All right, unless there's anything else, is there any public comment relating to the consent agenda? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Do we have a motion regarding the consent agenda?
May I move the, move to approve all the items on the consent agenda?
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, why don't you go ahead? Let's do a roll call on this.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any business not on the agenda?
Hey, Mr. Shields, or Mayor?
Yes, of course.
Before we move off of the consent, so not related to the approval of the consent, but since we just talked about this with budget, and I know that one item in there was for landscape services?
Yes.
Is there an opportunity to think about that for the general government and schools?
There is, and it's something that I would like to take up with the superintendent. The city used to do more cost-sharing with, or contracting for mowing and for this type of work. The mowing is actually more important because we, it's a, probably a better bid document if we have school facilities in our mowing contract. The prior superintendent did separate those out, so the schools now are doing their own mowing, and the city's doing mowing for its piece. That was a change that was made about five years ago. So I think that's a good conversation to have with the superintendent about merging those back together potentially.
Great. I agree. In general, it seems like, you know, for a small city, adding scale helps us get a more competitive price, right?
We agree.
Great, thank you.
So let me follow up. Councilmember Hardy, that's a great question. A question I have is, would we be better off with employees doing this as opposed to these significant contracts?
I wouldn't say no. This is a very robust and competitive market for these services, and that's where we can get the best price and the best level of services is going out to the private sector for this work.
Thank you.
All right, is there any other business not on the agenda? How about standing and regional committee or council liaison reports? Anyone have anything to mention? Yes, of course.
The Government Operations Committee meets tomorrow at noon at 400 North Washington, and on our agenda is the work plan.
Got a quick one, Mayor.
Yes, of course.
I would like to thank the Griggs family, the three Boy Scouts in that family who took the time to, well, it also would be called graffiti, but they were able to put this invisible paint on the sidewalk right outside of the library here, and says, you know, things like, "The solution to stormwater pollution is, don't dump your waste," and there's a picture of a fish, and you can only see it when it rains, or in my case, on Sunday when you put the water can on. So you all come out tomorrow and look at the, look at the fish on the sidewalk and live your life accordingly. Thank you.